I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Old Republic Meeting Act being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared the schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2024 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on Bolton Board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to local stores and the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of the schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice of the requirement of the Old Republic Meeting Act has been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local.
Mr. Serna.
Here.
Mr. Menke.
Here.
Mr. Menkena.
Here.
Nazio.
Here.
Mr. Yer.
Here.
Mr. Luba.
Here.
And Mr. Puiz.
Here.
We have a motion for the approval of the proposal. Motion made by Mr. Scandary, second by Mr. Clemente, in favor.
I don't know.
Captain Communications.
No chair.
Okay. Okay, we have some new business. It's our redevelopment study and I'm going to ask Kevin O'Brien if he's give us a brief synopsis if maybe we can move on to what's next at DMR.
Good night, Chair.
Yeah, Perry Mason. Perry Mason.
Good evening, board members, guests. The redevelopment study that is in front of you this evening is the result of a process that's laid out in the local redevelopment law as well as the municipal land use plan. And this process calls for a municipality to make a decision as to whether or not an area should be studied as to whether it meets qualifications as an area of redevelopment. So that has happened here in the borough. The mayor council made a decision that they would like to take a look at the neighborhood property formerly sharing. Now it's owned by ours. And they passed their resolution back in February and we passed two resolutions on the subject in March and in April calling for an investigative study. The study nearly determines whether or not the area qualifies, meets the criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. Back to just to remind you about, remember, use ordinances that occasionally come before us. Remember that your determination on a use variance has to be whether or not there are special reasons, whether it meets a positive criteria or a negative criteria, and only if an applicant meets those criteria can you grant that variance. Here in redevelopment, it's very similar in that there are eight criteria for redevelopment. And we in the study have got to show how this area that has been determined meets or does not meet those criteria. Fran Reiner, a professional planner, has been engaged by the board in order to come up with the investigative study. And what he's going to present to you is going to be a determination as to whether or not that area qualifies meets the criteria, you know, you talk about what they are or does not. After he is done with his presentation, he's going to be next and he's going to be putting something up on the whiteboard further away. Then the board will take action. You have a draft resolution in front of you as to whether or not you believe that this area qualifies, meets the criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. Should you do that, then this process goes forward and you transmit that resolution to the government side, the mayor council, and then they can take whatever action they wish to do next, which could be taking your approval and running with it or turning it down or only putting part of the property through. That's their decision and that's the next step. And I want to emphasize again, the study only does the determination, does it, does it not, is it, is it a, an area that qualifies for redevelopment. The next time the board actually sees this property, we'll see it when it pops up, is if they come in for a site plan approval now. But as we've talked about over the last few meetings, there are a number of steps that have to be taken, you see the chart. And after all those steps are taken, the final step for the redevelopment process is for somebody to come back here, show you the plan for site development, and then it's all back in your report. Are there any questions about the process? And I'm going to emphasize because a lot of smoke gets blown around meetings like this. I did not have anything to do with this study. I've talked with Mr. Ryan about it. I have read it. This is his study, this company's study. They are responsible for the content and courses. And I just wanted to say on record, I think we've done a great thorough job. You have an outstanding report in front of you. And I'll add again, as we talked about last time, that this is done six weeks faster than we could have done. So, Mr. Chairman, if you'll, my turn is over to Fran Reiner, planner. He's going to discuss the important part of you. And we're going to, I think we need to turn the, the.
Yeah. Mr. Ryan?
Sure.
Okay. If you could raise your right hand, please, I swear you win. With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is true?
I do.
Thank you.
I do too.
Kevin, and the comments that you did make already, same, same way.
Yes.
Thank you.
Luke, you want to get Chris?
Christian, with regard to this matter, do you swear that any testimony you made here is of the truth?
I do.
Thank you. It's Christian Quaidor.
So, do I need to be qualified or?
Just put it on the record that you're a professional.
I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2011, also a licensed licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, lead of the planning department, DMR and partner of DMR.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for having me here this evening. Kevin, thank you for, for the introduction. It helps me a great deal in order to walk through the actual presentation. So.
Just a second, I was going to interrupt you one second, please.
Yes.
I promised I will do that, but some of the members walked in a little bit late before you were able to hand out your pamphlets. So would you mind if they also, did everybody get one?
Everybody got one.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, everybody's that.
Okay.
I have extra ones if anybody needs one. I have another, ten or twelve more. I'll put right here if anybody wants to take them. Just housekeeping, Kathy gave me copies of the notice, so I have those for the board so that we can check that box. So this evening I'm going to present to you an overall synopsis of the report that we have in front of you. We're going to try and do this somewhere in the ballpark of twenty minutes or so, maybe a little bit longer, maybe a little bit shorter. So as was indicated, this is the first step of what would typically be a three-step process. The first step is an investigation study to determine whether or not the property in this case, Block B, meets the statutory criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. The planning board would provide a recommendation back to the mayor council and then the mayor council would designate through a resolution. There are two other steps that would, could follow. They're not necessary to follow. The second step would be a redevelopment plan, which would enable or enact essentially as a zoning for the property. And that would come back to the board and the board would be asked to determine whether or not the redevelopment plan was consistent with the borough's master plan. And then the third step would be a site plan application, typical of any other site application that comes in front of you. So as was indicated, there were three resolutions. I won't go through in detail. There was a resolution requesting the investigation study, then there was a March 14th and an April 11th resolution that Kevin had talked about. DMR prepared the investigation study and as we prepare these studies, we do a number of things. We reach out to the building department, the fire department, the police department, and the tax access records and ask for records through local requests and we're given that information. A number of those documents are identified in the appendices of this report. We also did site visits as well as visual inspections of each one of the buildings, walked through each building, met with the property owner on site, and did a full photo inventory that is within the report. We go through some of those this evening. Again, the, the goal is to determine whether or not we meet the statutory criteria for it to stay. There are eight, eight potential designations that property can meet in order to be designated for redevelopment. This is just a synopsis. The full language of each one is actually in, within the report, but this is kind of just an overview of what those eight are. We've highlighted B and H because those are the two that we have identified as the reasons why this property can meet the statutory criteria and as to why we recommend that it be designated. So the B and H portion, this is the full language of each one of those requirements. So for B, it's the discontinuance of the use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls and plazas, office parks, manufacturing, industrial purposes. The abandonment of such building or building, significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years, or the same being allowed to fall onto so great a state of disrepair as to be undertaken. So the important pieces here are the word, the words "for" are used, not the word "and". And we've highlighted the parts that we believe are significant to the reasons why we believe the property to be designated. So in office park, it has significant vacancies. Those vacancies have been there for at least two consecutive years. We'll go through, through those with you. And then H is, is the other criteria that can be met. And this is that the description of the delineated areas consist of the smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law or regulation. We'll kind of walk through those at the end. So if any property is designated, what happens? That's always an important question that the public wants to know. And so it's important to know that a designation does not change the zoning. There are no new uses that are permitted and the, and the existing uses that are there can revane. And businesses can continue to operate. In this particular case, the designation would be without condemnation, so it would not permit a taking or condemnation of any property. It does not trigger violation notices, but what it does do is identifies issues that could and should be addressed. So what we're going to do is we're going to walk through the entire campus with this slide and then we're going to go building by building. So the campus is approximately 108 acres. Map on the right shows all of the buildings in red and purple that are the buildings that constitute the campus. So overall, this, I'm just going to use round numbers, it's specific, a little over 3.15 million square feet of total square footage within the buildings that are identified in the red and purple on, on map. Those buildings, of those buildings that have been vacated, vacated for over two years, approximately 2.774 million square feet has been vacated for over two years. So you can see, if you just follow the buildings, K1 is approximately 163,000 square feet and change, and it was vacated in 2020. K2, that's the build, that was the building that was located closest to Galloping Hill Road. That was a million one square feet, was demolished in 2015. K5, 29,000 square feet, vacated in 2020. You can go on down the line. Now you can see K15 Block B is identified as less than two years. K15 Block E is identified less than two years, and K15 Block H is identified in less than two years. But overall, the campus has a vacancy rate of over 88% that have been vacated for more than two years. If you go back to the B criteria, it says significant vacancies for a period of over two years. So, so this, in our opinion, clearly qualifies as being vacated, the significant vacancy for over two years within these buildings. Just to note, if you, if for some reason you did not want to count the million one square foot of the building that was demolished in 2015, you would still have over 82% vacated for more than two years. So we're going to go through buildings at a time. We have some photos of each one of the buildings. The building K1 is highlighted in yellow. You're going to, I'm going to say a few times during our presentation, the term functionally obsolete, which means these are buildings that have been built, but today, under current circumstances, current office design, these buildings would require significant changes or upgrades in order to be able to be used properly. So the first building is the building K1. It is a executive office building. And so as, as everybody's aware, this campus was one particular user, Merck, and then they had multiple buildings. And so this particular building, K1, was, was intended to be the executive office building. So in other words, only executive, members of the executive committee were, were in this particular building. So the design of the building is, is very nice, but, but as a, as, if you wanted to retrofit this building or you wanted to bring in a different office user, it's not designed in a way that would allow for you to bring in conventional office or medical office because it was only designed for executives. So a couple of things about this particular building. The building has underground parking of approximately 160 spaces. Now, if you look at, at the top, it's 163,000 square foot building with only 160 spaces. So obviously that's not enough parking to support the size of the building, that would be one space for 1,000 square feet. There is a two-story lobby and a two-story cafeteria. Cafeteria is bottom right. My eyes aren't good enough to see the image number on that, the figure number on that. But there's a two-story cafeteria and a central core that goes up through all four stories so that when you're on the ground floor, it goes all the way up to the, to the fourth level, has natural light. However, on each one of the floors, the design of the building is that the executive suites are all on the perimeter of the building. And then the administration, which is one administration person per executive suite, are all on the inner core. So to convert that building into a conventional office building, not for executives, we would have to redesign the entire interior in order to allow for some executive offices and also allow for what would be conventional kind of office design. So this would be what we would call an, a functionally obsolete building. The building has been vacated for more than two years, vacant since 2020, and there is a three-story connector building that goes to the next, to the next building as an attachment. Just some photos of the executive suites on the top level of the building. And then you can see on the, on the bottom right image, the last image, that on the right is the, is the administrative suites and on the left would be the executive suites. So there's no, administrative suites don't have any windows. All of the windows are on the executive suites. Second building is K5. You can see that there's a connection between the K1 building and K5 building shown on the map. K5 building is approximately 175 feet by 175 feet, has been vacant since 2014, was constructed in 1968, and there's actually a tunnel that connects this building to the K15 building. And again, you can understand that when a campus is designed as a single, as a single campus for a single user, those types of uses and, and design is, is works. But when you look at and talk about whether or not this building can be adaptively reused, there are some functionally obsolete issues for this building. Primarily, it's 175 feet by 175 feet, which is a 30,000 square foot footprint. There are no interior courtyards on this particular building, so natural light into the center of this building is, is difficult because of the excessive depth and length. So again, this building would be difficult to adaptively reuse without significant renovations, given, given the, the lack of light on the interior and with the depth of the building. And then here are some images of, of the interior of this building. Again, vacant for now about 10 years. Just some office suites, you can see kind of how the building is, is laid out. K6 has been vacant since 2019. This building was built in phases. The first phase was built in 1973 and second phase in 1984. There are two courtyards in the center of this building. They don't show on the, on the site plan, but there are two courtyards, so there's natural light into the interior spaces on, on all the levels. So the interesting part of this particular building is that the first floor of this building was renovated in approximately 2019. You can see from the images here that that entire first floor was fit out, new carpets, upgraded for technology. You can see kind of, I'm standing on the middle right image, I'm standing at one window and you can see across to the windows of the courtyard. So again, a design that would, you know, allow natural light throughout the entire building. What happened was COVID hit and although they finished the first floor, nobody ever moved back into this. So this building was down to vacant for approximately five years. And then the other part of this is that the second floor of this building was gutted, but it was never renovated. So you can see on this page, the entire second floor is, is gutted right down to the, to the suds, and it was never fit out. So again, this would, this would take a lot in terms of, in terms of the amount of work on the second floor in order to be able to make this building functional. K11 is a, a building that was constructed in 1985, has been vacant since 2017. This is approximately 280,000 square foot building, which has 80% research and 20% office. So what we, we noticed in this building, top left image is the lobby space, again, completely vacant. But what we start to see in the image on the bottom right are some of the interior lab spaces that have no windows and really from a design standpoint, would have to either be renovated in order to open up to, to fit office or would have to be worked through from a, from a research and development standpoint in order to make them functional. So again, just some images of the interior of that building, some of the lab spaces, and then some of the hallways. And then these four images are some of the larger, more prevalent lab spaces, getting interior to the building with no natural light. Again, difficult to adaptively reuse without significant renovations as part of the project. So K15 is, is the largest building. This is, this is an interesting building in that although it's, it's, one building was actually constructed in eight different, what they call blocks. So six of the, sorry, five of the eight blocks are 100% vacant, not six, five are 100% vacant, and the five that are vacant have been vacant for over two years. So you can see in chart, K15, A, C, D, F, and G have all been vacant for more than two years. Now, this is a, a large building and so you can understand how this building would be incredibly difficult. You either have to get a single user into this building because there's only one point of access, one point of access, so that if you were to try to have multiple tenants or multiple users in this building, say by block, you would then have to construct and build security entrances for each one of those blocks. You have to make sure that there are elevated cores in each one of those blocks as opposed to the common areas. And so again, this is a building that would be very difficult in order to adaptively reuse, given, given the size of it, given the design of it, because it was designed as a single use or a single use tenant. So a couple of photos of this, the exterior of the building. Again, you can see, you can see there are a lot of interior hallways with a lot of interior lab space that really could not be used other than for lab space. And so renovating those would be very difficult. Top left image is a very typical interior lab space, no exterior windows. There are, there are water spouts in here for cleaning, but again, really separated and into very delineated kind of blocks within each one of the larger blocks. And then some more of the, of the interior lab space that is part of that building. So, so the building has exterior windows, predominant amount of square footage within the overall building is interior with, with no natural light, and then each block is kind of built and designed that way as well. The other thing to note is, is that, is that Merck intends to vacate all these buildings by, in 2024, so that although the three buildings, B, E, and H, don't meet the criteria, it's intended that Merck will be out of all the buildings by, by the end of this year. And then just some fine images of, of this. So the other buildings, we just kind of put together in terms of, because they are really ancillary buildings, support buildings to the overall campus. And as a single campus, these, these buildings would have been used for a single user. So you have, you know, K4, K14 are, are both for power to the, to the overall campus. And again, if you think about the redevelopment of the site and that there just aren't a lot of single users that would be able to take up this much square footage, those kind of power facilities for overall campus would really be obsolete because you'd want to bring power into each one of the buildings. So, so it was designed as a for a single user, but, but moving forward, we believe that these are clearly functionally obsolete. So the other thing that, the other buildings, K16 is the office building that's closest to Galloping Hill Road. That's actually on the exterior of the security gate into the campus. This building's also vacant right now, although I would say it's being, it's being renovated. And it's my understanding that the developer will be going into that building as a part of a potential redevelopment of the whole site. And then the K18, which is the yellow building furthest to my right, is the former firehouse, again vacant. And really, nothing you can do with a building of that type because of the way it's designed, has a large bay. This is, this is K16, this is the office building closest to, to Galloping Hill Road. And then this is the former firehouse interior. You can see there's a garage. Again, you know, as a single use, this was, was probably necessary, but moving forward would really be a building that couldn't be adaptively reused for any real purpose by itself. And then K14, just the interior of the, of the power that is supplied to the building. I did speak with, as we walked through the site, I spoke with the owner and they made it clear that this is well beyond its, its expected life cycle. So this building is really, they're really just trying to finish out before they leave. So kind of an overall conclusion, as we walk through this, this project and we walk through the buildings, it's clear to us that 88% or just over 88% of the 3,150-plus-thousand square feet has been vacant for over two consecutive years by, by itself, that that meets the criteria and can be designated because of that alone. That the majority of the buildings are designed as a part of a single campus for a single user. And then essentially they're functionally obsolete because of the interconnectedness of those buildings to each other and, and that certain buildings were designed specifically for certain uses. that by themselves would not really be able to be adaptively reused to conventional office without significant renovations. And then we also believe that these criteria H, which follows the state development redevelopment plan. And that is to revitalize states' cities and towns. And in this particular case, you have three plus million square feet of vacant space. And so, the designation of redevelopment allows for this particular property to be, to go through a redevelopment process and an adoptive plan that would then provide zoning to allow for the property to be revitalized going forward. So that, we believe that meets the criteria H. That it conserves the state's natural resources in that it's better to redevelop properties that already have infrastructure in the ground where you have parking and you have buildings than it would be to develop green field sites. So, that's an important aspect in terms of conserving the natural resources of the state. It obviously promotes economic growth in that the buildings are currently vacant and redevelopment plan, with the intention of redevelopment plan is to revitalize those buildings and put those buildings back into use. And then the last is to protect the environment and the property does have an LSRP and they are cleaning up the site and it's intended to be cleaned by 2028. So, for those reasons, we believe that the property and the buildings meet both criteria B and criteria H. So, the goal, as we discussed this morning, is for the board to determine if, based on the report and this presentation, the properties meet the criteria and can be designated as an area of need for redevelopment. The board will make a recommendation back to the mayor and council and then the mayor and council will make decisions whether or not to designate the property. And then the designation is submitted to the state for review and approval. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Are you going to use slide? Uh, I, uh... Mr. Chairman, what I want to do, I want to do more. I don't look good enough? You can't be good on your eyes.
I want to mark both the slides and the report. I know they're interchangeable as Exhibit A one. Let's do B one for the board, B one.
I have a special announcement, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Just two things before we go to questions and things like that. I would like the record to show that council president Zimmerman is here as partner of public tonight. And that we didn't mention this earlier and I should add that board member Ladati and Greg David were excused tonight because they have another board meeting at the Board of Ed, of course. You know, sometimes those things are crazy. And I wanted to thank the rest of the board members that did come here tonight for this special meeting, understanding how important it was and is that we have this special so we can move things along. And council liaison Mauro is not here tonight. So, I may ask the council president and the mayor if I could just deliver a message again as I did last week, but it may not be necessary. However, just wanted to get that out so everybody knows where we are. With that being said, you showed the presentation to the board members or anyone. Not anyone can view us, the board members have any questions at this point. You do.
You mentioned LSRP by 2028, is it contaminated?
Yeah, so when a site is contaminated, I'm not a civil engineer, but I'll give you the broad understanding of it. So, a site is contaminated, the state's made aware of it. As part of the cleanup process, they assign an LSRP, which is an environmental engineer that helps make sure that the process is moving forward to clean up the site. And so, when we went through this initial process with the property owner, they had indicated to us that they have an LSRP on site, they are remediating the site and that the intention of the remediation is to be done by 2028. I would tell you that the kind of environmental issues that we kind of walk through on a big scale were not of tremendous significance. It's really just an identification of contaminants that need to be cleaned up and that's what they're doing. I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Do you have a question?
Sure, sure. I didn't mean to be rude, I just have a personal question.
Really, can you mind just reviewing what we are considering?
So, before you this evening, is the mayor and council had asked the board, the planning board, to determine whether or not this particular property, which is block 181, lot one, meets the state statute criteria as an area of need for redevelopment. And so, as I mentioned in my presentation, Kevin mentioned as well, there are eight criteria that the property can meet that are within the state statute. You only have to show that you meet one of those criteria and you'll have to show that you meet all of them. So, what we've shown you this evening is that we believe it meets criteria B, which is, overall says two consecutive years of significant vacancies. And we also indicated that it meets the smart growth policy of the state. So, the board's responsibility this evening, I get it wrong, I know Kevin, somebody can correct me. But the board's responsibility this evening is to make a recommendation back to the mayor and council as to whether or not you believe the report that we've issued and the presentation we've made constitutes meeting the state statute criteria and therefore a recommendation back to the mayor and council for them to designate it would be that kind of step of process.
Nick?
But what you also mentioned on one of your slides is what redevelopment does not do. And what it does not do is doesn't change zoning, it doesn't allow them to do anything more than what they're there now. So, understanding that, then what is the core purpose of us approving this?
Yeah, so redevelopment has really, it's a two-step process. And the first step is to determine whether or not a property or properties meets statute criteria. And like you said, if it does, it doesn't change any of the zoning, it doesn't permit new uses or take away any uses that are already permitted. So, that would be the first step. Now, the second, now if the recommendation goes back to the mayor and council and if the mayor and council designates the property, then the next step is really the step where you're asking the question, which would be the mayor and council can then choose to move forward with a redevelopment plan. A redevelopment plan essentially just represents new zoning for that property. So...
That's where that part comes in, that where the zoning changes and it makes ordinances specific to the site.
Yes. Now, mayor and council would initiate that redevelopment plan process. Again, that's not a part of tonight. But the board's role in that would be to determine whether or not the redevelopment plan that, we will come back to present to you, the redevelopment plan, whether or not that redevelopment plan is consistent with the borough's master plan. And then you would make a recommendation back to the mayor and council to say it is consistent or is not consistent. And then the mayor and council would make a decision frankly, either way. So, if you say it's not consistent, the mayor and council can still vote to adopt it. It's just have to be by supermajority. You can say it is consistent and then the mayor and council has to adopt, can adopt it just by a supermajority.
So, in two overall scenarios. One, the board acted favorably tonight and it goes through the process you just did. And it allows the site in question to potentially get different uses through the redevelopment plan. In which case, the redevelopment plan would kind of set the goal for, it would supersede the zoning ordinance and it would just be that. Scenario two, they don't act favorably, in which case the site in question just remains the same use and you have to get a pharmaceutical back in there or research development back in there, right?
So, if the board were to, I might ask Louie to weigh in on this. I believe that the mayor and council, I want to say I believe the mayor and council can vote regardless of the recommendation, but I'm not opposed to that question.
If we say, if this board does not recommend this borough charter, then the county, the governing body can still do it, but I think this is supermajority in the law.
No, no, I get that. I'm just trying to paint the picture of we act favorably, it goes through redevelopment, you can get it on the works, whatever. If we don't act favorably, and let's just paint a picture. If we don't act favorably, the mayor and council says, no, we don't favor, blah, blah, blah. Then that just...
You mean if everything stays the same?
If everything stays the same.
Then it is what it is.
It is what it is.
If someone wants to, if someone wants to come in and rejuvenate this project, find a new use. It would come to us if they wanted a whole new use there. But I'm telling you for, how many, eight years have we been dealing with it?
Hundred and eight.
That's a heavy lift for a use there.
I get it, now listen, I'm just trying to paint the overall picture because, you know. And that would be...
Yeah, I think you need to not rush.
So, just to be clear, redevelopment plan, there are multiple options. You can, redevelopment plan can supersede the underlying zoning. A redevelopment plan can be done as an overlay. In other words, you can either choose to use the redevelopment plan zoning or the underlying zoning. And there's nothing to say that a redevelopment plan wouldn't allow for the same uses and more. It doesn't mean that medical office or research development wouldn't be a use that would be part of a redevelopment plan. It just, there may be other uses that are added to allow the property to be redeveloped.
And this is basically private zoning, which is allowed under the redevelopment law if the steps are followed, which up to this point ain't. It's basically...
I get it, I'm just trying to paint both pictures so that everybody knows.
Plenty of board, when and if the council prepares a redevelopment plan, it would come back to us as, as Rex said, Grant said, to take a look at. And then at the end of the process, we would hear, there will be a site plan application for whatever was proposed to go in there, which is going to be consistent with the redevelopment plan. So, we have a couple more bites of this.
Yeah, likely with the site this size, it's probably not going to be one site plan application. Probably, you'll probably be having a site plan application here every year based on a redevelopment plan.
No opinion?
Anyone else who wanted to answer?
No, no, I don't need to. They're all good. I just, I like how you follow up. So, I would, I think, you know, we have a little bit more discussion, but I think it's a good time to maybe open this to the public and then come back to our professionals, okay? So, I have a motion to, a motion made by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Scigariol, in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter, this matter only? Okay, see you none? Closed by Mr. Mathieu, seconded by Mr. Scigariol, in favor?
Aye.
So, we heard from Mr. Lerner?
Reiner.
Reiner. Sorry, I was close. We heard from Mr. Reiner. And I would like to ask our engineer and our planner to weigh in on what you saw here tonight to advise our board maybe one step further. And then I'm also going to ask the board members if they absolutely understand everything that's going on here tonight or if they're going to make a decision that is going to affect the borough going forward. So, Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. I had a chance to review this study earlier like Kevin did and I agree it was very well done. And especially that I agree that almost 80% of it is vacant, that this would be a good factor.
Mr. Reiner?
Thank you, Chairman.
You want to stand in the corner?
Harry Mason presented. I think Mr. Reiner has given a very conclusive presentation to the board. I agree with his study and his recommendations to the board, his conclusions. This property, in my opinion, as a planner, doesn't need dequalifications for the redevelopment law. And I believe that it is well within the ability of this board to adopt the study recommended to the borough council and then take action.
Any board members wishing to speak on this? It's important that we all understand what's in front of us. Yes?
Just from the fire department standard, we've been in that, I've been in every one of those buildings multiple times. And like the report says, they do let themselves be very difficult to rent out, lease out to more than one, more than one tenant. The way the entrances are, all the floor plans, the K one, everything's all been controlled. You can block off even four, half of four. So, I do agree with that, that it would be very difficult to sort of anything. It's definitely vacant.
I originally, originally thought the planner was going to, I've seen this done when you try to stretch to make things fit into that hole, that square pad, you know, about four square feet. But it was a comprehensive plan and I think we exceed our reasons for, in this matter. I don't think we have much of a choice when it comes to it. This is comprehensive, this is as far as I seem to play.
Anyone else? Okay. First, let me apologize for calling you Mr. Lerner. Mr. Reiner, I do think as the planning board chair here, you did prepare an outstanding presentation and you made it very, very easy to understand. And moving forward with the advice of our planner and our engineer and of course our attorney, I have to say that I'm very, very satisfied with what's in front of us. And I think this is a step in the right direction, the right direction. It did take an extra couple of weeks in order to iron out some of what I'm going to call the protocols. However, I apologize for that delay. But going forward, we will expedite things as best we can. I did want to take a minute to just say that I feel comfortable now that there is no legality issues, there's no, no one's going to come back to this board or to us any way, shape or form and say that we did something wrong or just that, just wrong. So, we're here now. So, I'm going to ask someone to make a motion to move forward that this plan is consistent with the master plan.
There's a motion, there's a resolution in front of you, you should have it in front of you. Recommendation determining that lot 181, lot one, et cetera is approved tonight, memorialized tonight. That's what we're voting for, that the preliminary investigation has determined and we agree that it has determined that this property is, needs a criteria for non-condemnation area need of redevelopment. And the second thing we're really is to recommend to the borough council that they proceed, that they formulate a redevelopment plan and adopt the redevelopment plan for this, for this site. Knowing, it's not part of the resolution, knowing that it'll come back to us eventually taking a look at it.
So, we did go ahead and prepare this resolution in anticipation that if this presentation went well, that this would move forward. However, it's not my decision, it's yours, it's ours. So, do we have a motion to approve this presentation and this resolution moving forward? Motion made by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Deluca, roll call please.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Lintina?
Yes.
Mr. Mathieu?
Yes.
Mr. Scigariol?
Yes. Yes.
And Mr. Polis?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate Kevin's help with everything and your guidance. And I'm glad that we are here to try and through that initial part and get any thoughts. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. And I want to say congratulations, and let's get this thing moving. We're very, very, very happy that you're here. And I am now signing this resolution. It's that, that's the show. The council will see this, I might say.
Okay.
Motion?
Go to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys, we didn't, wait, we didn't have roll call, did we?
We have roll call.
Oh, the next motion is comments for the good or the void. Uh, Eddie? Where am I going?
We probably don't have a meeting yet. A G, no, no. Problem. Okay. There's a couple of things in the office, but they're not going to make this.
We should do a field trial. So why don't we finish, why don't we just finish protocol? Does someone want to make a motion, something for the meeting to the public? Moved by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Scudariol, all in favor? I, anyone from the public? Seeing none? Okay. Motion closed, members of Clemente, seconded by Mr. Scudariol. Is there a motion to adjourn? Adjourned by Mr. Mantena, seconded by Mr. Mathieu, all in favor? Good night, and thank you. Jason, Jason.